Welcome to the Chamber Spotlight, a local talk show podcast brought to you by the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce in association with the local scene. We'll be recording on a regular basis and we'll cover many topics that will span local businesses, local elections, local town governance, and a citizens academy. Today is September the 8th. I'm your host, Fraser Townley, and we're sitting down with Stephen Dodge, the town moderator, and Andrea Cesareini, the town clerk.
I'm interim town clerk right now, bud. I am the town clerk.
Intern or interim?
Interim.
Interim, okay. Sorry, the English language. So, we're going to talk moderator, clerk, town meeting, everything to do with you guys. Let's start with you, Stephen.
First of all, it's great to be here. Thanks for the invite and thanks to the Chamber for sponsoring these. People have heard me talk. I try not to get on a soapbox, certainly not while I'm conducting town meeting. But when I'm not, my soapbox is mainly focused on the fact of the lack of local news coverage that we have in Pembroke. So, anything that you do, that the local scene does, that covers local news, unfiltered, non-Facebook, is great. And so I appreciate this opportunity and I appreciate the fact that you and the Chamber are doing this.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Stephen. And you've, actually, that's a brilliant segue because I forgot the local town news. Andy, we're not going to wish off to the town hall because you're here.
I am.
So what do you have for us?
So.
Introduce yourself.
Andrea Cesareini, interim town clerk. So this week, we are finishing up Pleasant Street paving. This DPW supervisor believes that this week, finishing up the paving, next week, working on the aprons for the residents driveway, that water infrastructure project on Center Street is going to be beginning soon. So from about Elliot Ave to Little's Ave, there's going to be some disruptions. They're going to be doing some water main infrastructure upgrades. So you might want to avoid that within the next couple of weeks. The abatements for the property taxes, those are, you can now start applying. The assessors office is encouraging people to apply. They are due by April 1st. Couple of meetings coming up. The Recreation Commission has a meeting tomorrow and Tuesday, September 9th. Select Board has a meeting September 10th. So that's this week's updates we have.
I believe I'm at the Select Board meeting this week.
They haven't posted their agenda just yet. They still have time, but I haven't seen.
Okay, by the time this podcast comes out.
Agenda will be posted, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
This afternoon.
Jolly good. So Stephen's done a quick introduction to himself, the moderator, your.
So I'm the interim town clerk. I was interim, meaning I am an appointed official to an elected position. So town clerk is an elected position of the town of Pembroke currently, and I am the interim. I was appointed last year in 2024 to fill the remainder of Peg Struzik's term, which will be up May of 2026.
Right.
For all intents and purposes on the town clerk, but my official title is the interim town clerk.
But you're doing all the work.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you get all the pain.
Yeah, yeah. The pleasure, all the pleasure. I wouldn't call it pain.
I get it. So roles and responsibilities, Stephen, talk to me about the moderator.
So the position of moderator, as you know, maybe some people don't know, but most of our towns in this area were really centered around churches. And the First Parish Church of Pembroke still has a moderator, and the moderator conducts certain business.
That's not you.
That's not me, no, no, no. But I am not a member, so I can't go into great detail what the moderator does. But I know the church has a moderator. In fact, Andy Wondell used to be the moderator. I don't know if he still is or not, the First Church of Pembroke. So that's kind of where the term and the position evolved from. So Massachusetts and the six New England states are really unique. Really, I don't think there's any other place in this country, I know in this country, and maybe in the world, that allows ordinary residents to be the legislative body. It is democracy in its purest form, and that's the town meeting form of government. And the six New England states have it. They're slightly different, but they are more the same than different. And it's principle, it's founded on the principle that the citizens are the legislative body. So you have the Board of Selectmen, which is the executive branch, but the legislative branch is the town meeting. They pass budgets, they pass laws, they pass bylaws. And so every year we have one, sometimes two, town meetings. And that's the case for every town in the Commonwealth and every town in New England, not for larger cities. And so the moderator is the one who runs the meeting. So I have to be Switzerland. I have to be neutral, and I am on everything. I can't be perceived as being biased towards one position or another, whether it's just general party politics, or whether it's a particular issue in town or a particular candidate in town. But my goal is to make sure we get all the business done. And my personal goal is to make sure that everyone who leaves that town meeting feels that A, they knew what they were talking about, and B, that they felt that they were part of the process, even if they don't speak. But I want everyone to be clear in what they're voting on. And it's really, really important for people to attend town meeting. And we talked before the program, we talked a little bit about this. We have how many registered voters now in Pembroke?
Just about 15,000.
15,000 and a population of 19?
About 19,000.
Yeah, 1,000.
The numbers will teeter.
So we fortunately are pretty, our quorum to get started in the meeting is 150. And the last number of years, there were years when we struggled to get 150. And sometimes we didn't.
Which is 1%.
Exactly, yeah.
Which is crazy.
Yeah.
You just need 1% to show up.
So we've had, done a good job, I think, about getting a quorum on time. And we've had some meetings that have been three, four, I think we had one 500 years ago when.
A few years ago, actually.
Right, school issue or something. I'm trying to remember.
It was the Community Center.
Community Center, right.
About 535 people.
Yeah.
And that was our largest one.
And that was during COVID.
What about after?
After COVID, yeah.
But in my seven years of being there, that was the highest attended that we've had.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that may, I don't know if that's an all-time record, but that's, so we usually get to 50, 300, thereabouts.
Usually to start the meeting, we're at about 300.
Yeah, which is good. It's double the quorum, but it's a very small percentage, as you pointed out, Fraser, of the registered voters. But the people get it done. And I really feel blessed in Pembroke because I talk to my moderators in other towns, and some of them, some towns can be difficult. And you've got characters at town meeting who want to hear themselves speak, and sometimes you have disruptors. And we've really never had that in Pembroke. People are respectful, and they understand the process. And we get it done. We got how many articles done last spring?
Seventeen? No, it was more than that, 29.
Yeah, 29, yeah.
29.
29 articles in less than two hours, I think, or something like that. So we don't rush people through, but there are rules that we follow. We can talk more about that, that we follow. And my, one of my jobs is to make sure we stay within those rules, because they're not my rules, they're not the Select Board's rules.
Yeah.
They're the rules that the town has adopted to guide town meeting. And they're a version of, most people refer to Robert's rules.
Yes.
They're a version of Robert's rules, actually called Town Meeting Time. And those are the rules we follow, and we get it done, thanks to the clerk who does really all the hard work. I just have to be up there and just, you know, it's.
Like, he's moving it over to you.
The director.
I think moderating, sometimes it'd be the hard work. Like you said, you have to remain very neutral. You can't take a bias to anything, and sometimes.
Are you not neutral?
Absolutely, I am.
That's what I thought.
Thankfully, I don't have to, you know, sometimes people come up, they'll want to speak, and some of the things they're speaking aren't the most appropriate for the time.
Yeah.
That's where the moderator has to use their judgment, and to not stifle anybody, and not to, you know, prevent someone from speaking their opinion, but also making sure it's appropriate to the decorum of the meeting. But to the clerk's role, you know, I also get some support from Sabrina, the town manager's office. But we're making sure that, you know, if it needs to pass by a certain majority, that that's being achieved. Sometimes we have to appoint tellers, so we'll actually go into the audience and count the hand counts or collect the tickets of people that are trying to do a secret ballot. So those are some of the things we prepare ahead of time, so that if we have these more controversial articles, we're ready to handle them should there be, you know, a need for a hand count or a secret ballot. That's some of the work that the clerk has to do, kind of behind the scenes, that you don't always see, that we get prepared.
Now, the last few meetings I've seen, there's been two of you on stage with the moderator? Is it normally two?
Yeah. So it's always the town clerk and the assistant town clerk. However, because I'm an interim town clerk, we're in a really, you know, unique position right now, where I cannot be the clerk of the meeting. So you'll see at the last meeting, we had to appoint Margaret Struzik, the previous town clerk.
Yep.
She was voted at the meeting to be the town clerk for the meeting. But I'm the one that's going to be taking the notes. And if you have any questions, and if you need a certified vote from town meeting, it'd be my office that would provide it for you. So you're going to see that again in the fall town meeting, that kind of odd appointment schedule before we really conduct the official business.
Yeah.
Because I am the interim town clerk. So that's unique, and hopefully that, you know, will change.
That may change before the election, is that correct?
So they have to, there's actually an article on this town meeting warrant, so Article Three.
There we go.
Yeah. Article Three is referring to the, to make the town clerk position to go from elected to appointed. So if that passes, then yeah, then I would be appointed till 2026. And then we'd hopefully go into contract negotiations, and you'll be my town clerk, I'll be the town clerk.
And do you think that's a better situation for the town clerk?
I'm not, so speaking of being.
This is the British expression, the clerk, not the clerk.
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to give any opinion, because this is a town meeting decision. I obviously stand in a very unique position. It's not my decision to make.
No, I understand that.
And I don't want to tell the, I don't want to, you know, I think I stand in too much, there's too much personal bias.
That was an unfair question, so I'm going to take it back. Stephen, what do you think?
Well, I just want to point out one thing, and that is the clerk actually kind of wears two hats. One is the clerk of the town, and all her responsibilities, you know, maintaining the voting list and registration and running elections and doing the logistics of town meeting and all that. And the other is, she or he is clerk of the town meeting. And so we discovered unbeknownst to any of us, that's why we have town lawyers, town council, is that there's a quirk in the law that says, and I'm not sure why, I think I know why, but I don't really know why, that a interim town clerk, as Andy is, cannot be the clerk of the town meeting. So we, again, as Andy said, our previous term town clerk, Peg Struzik, stepped up to the plate. We asked her and said, would you be in the, would you allow yourself to be elected? And the town meeting actually has to elect a clerk for that meeting. And would you do it for the spring town meeting, which she did. And I guessing, I haven't talked to her, but I'm hoping she'll do the same thing in the, for the special town meetings coming up in October. So a little quirk in the law, it just takes two extra minutes. We have to go through the procedure of nominating someone, seconding, and then voting. And anyone who's a town meeting attendee, again, you have to be a registered voter to attend, could actually run for town clerk and ask that their, have their name be put in nomination, be nominated. But I suspect Andy will be the, well, Peg will be the, will be the town meeting clerk for this meeting coming up.
And so you hinted that you had an opinion as to why that is. Do you want to share that?
So my only guess, and maybe you know this, Andy, is that if you're running for election, you can use, you could possibly use the town meeting as kind of an election platform.
Oh, okay.
And so in order to prevent that.
Yeah.
Someone came up with the idea of passing a statute that says interim town clerks. Now, it didn't say that they have to be running for the position, as I'm sure Andy will be doing next year, right?
We'll see what happens.
If it's still, right. Let's just say she's interested in staying town clerk. And I'm, I hope she stays town clerk.
Or if it gets moved to appointed.
Right.
I think that's the key you were coming from.
Right. It might be, might be changed to an appointed position rather than elected.
But if it stays elected, surely Andy will be on the ballot while she's acting town, or interim town clerk at the next.
Right. So anyway, the law is the law. And so the law says you can't be an interim town clerk and be the clerk of the town meeting.
Right, okay.
So we have to abide by the law, so we have to appoint a town clerk.
Sure, sure.
A clerk for the meeting.
And it doesn't sound like it's a draconian old law that we're just abiding by. There seems to be some reasons there. We're just.
Yeah.
Trying to work out what they are.
Yeah.
I've got it. So you were, you were saying, Stephen, I think we, did I interrupt you?
No, no, I think we covered it. And let me also say that I love Andy, and she's done a tremendous job. But again, I don't have a position either on whether this article should pass or not, whether the position should remain elected position or be become an appointed position.
And that's Article Three. How do you know it's Article Three? Has that been published yet? Or is that inside information?
Well, we've gotten drafts of the warrants.
Oh, okay.
We've gotten drafts of the warrants.
Okay. So I just want to come back, Stephen, to something you've been saying. And it's something that we've been highlighting in all of the, well, not all of them, but the majority of the podcasts we've done. And that is the importance of this style of government versus any other style of government. And I can tell you, having lived in several other countries before I came here, this is very unique style of government. But it's putting the control, people's lives in their hands. It's giving the control to the residents. So it baffles me why we get, we've just said, it's less than 5% of the electorate show up to vote on things that could change their lives every single day. Roads, water, housing, education. All of these things are governed by the town meeting. And yet, we'll come out in busloads to vote for a president of the, and it doesn't affect our, I mean, of course it affects our lives, but it doesn't change our day to day, whereas we can at the town level. And yet, we don't get people showing up. And we need to get people showing up, although I don't know where we're going to place them. If you get.
Even overflow, Rob.
I don't even think the, I mean, if you get the people that should be showing up, if you get the density that, if people understood how important it was, the high school couldn't cope.
No, I think you're right. And it's not just a struggle in Pembroke, it's every town.
Yep.
A very small percentage of people come up. Some towns, like Plymouth, have a representative town meeting in which you are elected to be a town meeting member. So you can only vote at a town meeting if you are elected, and that's part of the general.
By precinct.
Right.
Yep. And I don't know how many Plymouth has, and, but they, but most towns are just open to anybody.
Yeah.
And like Pembroke is, and as long as you're a registered voter, you can show up and you can speak.
Cool.
We allow non-registered voters in a visitor's section. We don't want to exclude anyone, but you can't vote. And the tellers are instructed that they are in, the people sitting in the visitor's section cannot be.
Sure, can't be counted. So we have an annual town meeting. It's given by its name. It's the annual town meeting. That's in the spring. And it's usually.
It's always the second Tuesday in May.
Which is always also just before the town election.
Exactly. Yeah, that's set by our bylaws.
Right.
Yeah.
And is there a reason for that?
So previous years, those town meetings have been in March, in April. I think May, I think it has to do with looking at your budget that's going to be coming in, and being able to appropriate the right funds. If things change, March might be too early of a time. I think we found to appropriate funds for our capital budgets and our operation budgets, because things can change. You still have almost two months, about six to seven weeks, even after that May town meeting. So I think they found that it's, that's the more appropriate time to kind of have the discussion, have those votes, and set your fiscal year budget, about eight weeks out.
It's interesting, because Linda Peterson and Tracy Marino did a podcast with us. And it was in that podcast that I found out that the town budget, we vote on it, the residents vote on accepting the town budget, but it's not ratified until we know the funds were coming in from state. And that information doesn't come in until after the town meeting. So it's, you know, we're asking the town folk to vote on something that's not finalized.
It's not finalized in the sense that the town doesn't know exactly what their revenues are, but the votes are finalized. So if you vote someone's salary at $35,000, that doesn't change. If the $35,000 doesn't come in, then you have to actually have a subsequent town meeting to deal with it.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons we'll get to the, I'm sure, the special town meeting.
Yes.
And why we sometimes, not always, need a special town meeting. But the votes are final. And the only time a town meeting vote can be undone is through another town meeting vote.
Right. And that segues nicely onto the second town meeting, which is the special town meeting, which happens in the fall.
Yeah. So the annual town meeting is always, as Andy said, is in the spring. It used to be in March. Not all that long ago, we moved it up along with the election. And that sets the, sets the budget for the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. As you know, towns' fiscal years are July 1st through June 30th. So anything financial takes effect July 1st, the next fiscal year. And then we can pass bylaws to change existing zoning laws. We can do all sorts of things. We had a number of citizens petitions on the warrant for the last town meeting. In the fall, sometimes, as I said, sometimes adjustments have to be made to the budget, or it could be non-budget related. The town decides it needs to spend money on a particular item, or someone can, the threshold for the number of signatures needed is higher, but someone could put a citizens petition on the special town meeting warrant. Now, we don't always have a special town meeting in October. We did not have one last year. I think two of the last four years, if I remember correctly, we have not had a special town meeting in October. So it's not always the case, but more often than not, we have a special meeting in October. And that's when we make revisions to votes if we need to, we made in the spring, or do other things. And so this town meeting warrant is fairly short. People say to me, what's controversial, what isn't? And I've given up trying to predict.
For people that are listening and can't see, Mr. Dodge has got the paperwork in front of him.
There's 10 articles that are on this warrant.
This is exciting. Inside track.
Well, not so much.
We don't have the numbers, which is, I think, what people are going to be more concerned.
Yeah. But the warrant won't be final until the selectmen sign it. And you know, a lot of our, this is why I love town meeting, and because the history goes back, you know, hundreds and hundreds of years. And so when they talk about the warrant, it's really important, because the warrant is the notice for you, Fraser, or my neighbor next, across the street, or anyone in town who wants to know what's on the warrant. And literally, they used to be posted. There were places, they still have to be physically posted, what, in the post office?
The three post offices, the Country Corner Store, and the Pembroke Library, and the Pembroke Town Hall. And that's in our bylaws. So I actually.
Where's the Country Corner Store?
The Country Corner Store is on our Precinct Four. So that's the only location in our Precinct Four where we could have had any sort of public posting.
Interesting.
And so that's, as long as I've been in town, that's when, I guess, the posting for Precinct Four, that's where they, we post there. So Country Corner Store is at the intersection of Lake Street and Plain Street, near the school bus.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah. So you can go there, you can get, you know, some milk and some eggs, and look and check out the town meeting warrant.
But didn't we change things that you now have to post it electronically, right? Is that, or is that just something you do and not required to do?
I think that's the thing we do. It's in our town bylaws that these, that they have to be. These warrants and any bylaw changes have to be posted in these locations. I don't think that the website's in our bylaws, but I could be wrong.
Yeah. But I think most people, including myself, access it through the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we also have to have paper copies because, for the town meeting.
Yep.
For attendees.
Yeah. And I think the cutoff date for printing those is like the first of October.
So the warrant has to be signed by October 1st.
Right.
And then it has to be posted by October 7th.
Yeah.
So many weeks before the actual, three weeks?
14.
14 days?
Yeah, 14 days.
Before the actual town meeting, which this year is.
I'm sorry, special is seven.
Seven.
Seven is very special.
So, and this year, it is Tuesday, October 21st, at 7 o'clock. We used to start at 7:30. We now start at 7:00.
Okay.
At the High School on Learning Lane.
Very good.
You need to be registered to vote by October 10th.
Oh, yeah.
To participate.
So let's get these, okay, so in order, 1st of October, the warrant can't be amended.
Yeah, that's, that's when the selectmen sign it, and so it's finalized.
It's actually closed now, isn't it?
Yeah, it is closed.
It's closed, but the details will be final by the 1st of October.
They're still waiting for some language from Town Council on some of the articles. They're still waiting on some figures from some of the departments on what, you know, what they need out of free cash. So that's why they, we get placeholders, so we know what's to anticipate.
Okay.
And they give us the hard numbers.
The next critical date after that is?
The posting, I'm sorry, no, October 10th.
Right.
Because that is the deadline to register to vote.
Deadline to register vote. And then the vote itself will be at the town meeting, which will be the 21st?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the High School.
Three critical dates for the listeners.
And I think most people know this, but I think the other key is, so the warrant is a notice. It doesn't mean the wording has to be verbatim. It has to be pretty close, what we in moderators' parlance call the four corners. You know, you can't have a, an article that authorizes the town to buy a fire engine and decide to buy a boat with it, you know? I mean, it has to be within the four corners.
Yeah.
But you can change the dollar amount, you can change the color of the fire. I'm getting a little, you know, too specific here.
Red to red.
Right. But, so that's the beauty, because people can amend, and I always try to make this as clear as possible, the final vote, the final version, as long as within four corners, as long as the same subject matter, is up to the voters.
Yeah.
They can change the dollar figure. They can change zoning bylaws, to a certain extent. They can change some other, you know, bylaw change if they want. They can amend it, as well as vote it up or down. So that's, again, I think it is unique to New England and the town meeting form of government.
Yeah. No, we, so we've, in the bylaws committee, we've just submitted, so there's a warrant going forward, a bylaw change for the noise. And we agreed the wording at the last bylaw meeting. But that has to be, go through town council, then it has to be agreed by the select board, and then it goes to the town. So, you know, we are not the decision makers. We're just guardians pushing things forward for the, for the public to agree on. Very good. So you, you're shirking. You're not, you're not giving me any detail. What have we got there?
So we've got, how many articles?
About 10.
10 articles.
Yep.
Some of them are fairly routine. Sometimes they have to make mid-course adjustments, adjustments to the budget.
Yeah.
And so there's articles that do that, that articles that will, you know, authorize some capital projects. I think that probably the most controversial, again, I'm always, I'll tell you one story of a meeting that goes back to my predecessor, and.
Walsh.
John Walsh, yeah, who many people will remember, longest-serving moderator, probably in the history of the world. I don't think anyone's served more than 59 years. The moderator and the hangman came close, I think, but I don't think he hit 59 years. John Walsh was a good friend. He died about 10 years ago. But he, he was, he did a great job. But he was moderating, and there was a meeting, there was an article about buying a rowboat for the lifeguards at the town landing. And we had a 20-minute discussion on whether the boat should include oar locks or not, for the oars. And finally, and I think his name, I get it correctly, is Walter Frisbee, and there was a, Armstrong Boats, maybe? I don't know, in Bryanville? I may be wrong on the details. He stood up and said, he said his name, he said, I'm the owner, I'll give you the damn.
What?
So, but it was a 20-minute discussion.
Yeah.
The very next article was, at the time, I want to say, a $20 million school budget. And maybe it was less than that, but it was fairly, there was no debate. It was all those in favor, say, I oppose, no, the ayes have it.
I have been in town meetings where it's the tiniest thing gets people riled up enough to get up and say, I want to hear, I want to say something about this. And yet, you're right, big budget. What's the budget for the whole town? It's 75 million?
About that, yeah.
Yeah, 75 million.
Or more recently, we had the MBTA zoning. We passed that, I think, 2023 in our local. And I knew the weight of that bill. And so I was, you know, like, sitting up, I was still, I was still the assistant town clerk.
Yeah.
And I know, we know the articles that we just got to pay attention to, because that's usually one for the clerks. If I know there's an article that is, you know, I've seen maybe more discussion than others.
Yeah.
I know I need to prepare my counters, need to prepare some of our equipment that we use. And so with the MBTA, that act came up, that article, the only discussion was, you know, some trivial thing, you know, where is this going to be? Nothing else. Passed, no questions. And then you see these other communities that have, you know, they failed to pass it. There's been a lot of controversies behind it. And I said, we got, I'm not sure if lucky is the right word, but it just, it went right through. And it was so surprising because I knew, like I said, I knew, you know, the weight of the bill. And I was like.
Yeah, but so with that one, my understanding is, we didn't acquiesce to the demands of the state. We confirmed that we met the demands of the state in our normal, regular bylaws, with the exception of, you know, making it a right by right. There was, there was some small wording that we changed.
We did the right, we did the right thing. It's just, I was expecting, I was expecting a lot more discussion on the article. And then when there was barely anything, I was, I was surprised.
I believe that discussion is going on.
Yeah.
As we speak.
Yeah, well, it's been going on since the article passed.
Since the article passed, exactly.
So, so we go through our, all the line items. So there's the annual budget, and there's several hundred line items for every department. And then there's other, there's a capital article that authorizes us to spend money for capital projects, which is separate from the operating budget. And then there may be other articles that require an appropriation for a sum of money, ratifying a contract with towns. But my point is, other towns don't do it this way. But a lot of what a town meeting does is kind of steeped in tradition, not just rules. And so we have always read all, the moderator has always gone line by line. It actually goes fairly quickly, maybe 10 minutes to do the whole budget.
I wouldn't even say that long.
Yeah, but there are hundreds of line items. And so, and, and for the most part, and I always make it clear, I'm going to go through this quickly, but if you have a question or you want to amend it, jump up and yell, and I'll recognize you. So of, of what, $70 million budget and some million-dollar line items? What two items have gotten the most questions over the last, well, 15 years that I've been moderator? My salary, which is $100.
Clockwinder.
The town clockwinder, which is what, 1500?
Sixteen hundred, yeah.
$1500 or something like that.
Outrageous. Come on.
But, you know, that's not a criticism, but it's just, it's-
It's an observation, I think, of what the general public, you know, what they, what they observe and what, you know, what they want, you know, details on.
And it's, I have to say, I've been very fortunate the last few meetings where I've been part of a panel. So I'm looking at the audience and seeing the facial expressions and the twitching and the shuffling in the seats and everything, that's, to me, is an indication of folks unrest. And it surprises me because we'll say something and everyone seems to be feathers ruffled. Why are you getting so upset about that? And then other things just float through. It's crazy.
So can I tell another story?
Please do.
One of my favorite stories about John Walsh, and there's a ton of them.
Down here, I want to know some of the hardest moments, happiest moments, so let's go.
Oh, I have to think about those. But John was a master, and he, he was a little bit of an entertainer as well, which I try not to be because I just want to play it straight. But he would have a great sense of when the meeting was ready to move on after a particular discussion. So there is a motion that can be made to move the question. And it's non-debatable, and when someone moves the question and, and it's seconded, then the vote is whether, up or down vote, whether you are ready to go to the main question and vote, or continue discussion. So, and it's, you know, I can't allow it right away. There has to be enough discussion. But usually, the meeting is pretty good about kind of policing itself.
Yeah.
And someone will come up and say, you can't make a speech and then move the question.
Right.
You have to come up and move the question. And, and it, nine times out of 10, it passes. And then we go on and vote on the main question. So John would have a sense of when the meeting was, as you mentioned, getting a little bit restless. And I swear, I shouldn't say this, I think he would invent someone, he would call someone up, mention his name and said, you know, John Smith moves the question, he said, and this is the way he would frame it, I could never get away with this. But he said, all those who want to continue discussion say aye, all those who want to debate it to death say, or say aye, or say no, whatever it was. But, but, and it, it never failed, and, you know, the, the meeting did what it was supposed to do, and that was, you know, it had ended discussion and it was time to go on to the main vote.
Yeah.
But there were million stories of John. He was a real character. He had a real flair for the job, and he did a great job. Did a great job for 59 years.
It is a skill that I'm still working on. I, I do the moderating of the campaign, the candidates' speeches and stuff like that. And after two hours of listening to people giving their arguments, you know, you, you say things that you think is helping or you think you're moving it on, and sometimes you're not. But you don't know. You don't know what the, how the people are thinking at the time, so anyhow. So that's, that's an amusing one. Any difficult moments that you can remember? Andy, Andrea, sorry.
Difficult, I don't know if I'd say difficult. I think when you've got, you know, controversial articles, and then you have, you know, weighted arguments back and forth, this is the least one that always gets me, weighted arguments back and forth, and then, you know, I don't want to say one side, you know, the vote turns out one way, and then everybody leaves.
Yes, I've noticed that.
And then everyone leaves, and, you know, there's still a lot of important business of the meeting to conduct. And so for me, that's always one that, you know, I wouldn't say it's personally difficult, but it's difficult to see, you know, there's only such a small vested interest in maybe one or two articles, and then the interest is gone. And the people, what do we walk out the door? So that one for me, I wish people would stay. I wish people would, I think the more time that they spend at town meeting, the more that they understand town meeting, the more that they can actually, I don't want to say yield their power, but there's a lot of power to anybody checking in at town meeting. I mean, talk about the most open, direct representation for government. You're, you can stop the line item that we're voting on for the school, this, you know, school operating budget. You can question it, and you can, you can vote to amend. There's a lot of power. And so when I see people kind of forfeit that power and walk out the door because their article is done, you know, that to me, I'm like, I want to call back and say, wait, don't you understand? There's so much more work here to do.
I actually think that is a fantastic expression you've just shared with us. When you forfeit your power, that's exactly what people are doing.
It is. It is forfeiting their power. I mean, and then, then I'm proud that they came and they helped us get the quorum and they attended. But it's, it's discouraging to me when I see, you know, they only cared about such a small portion of what we're talking about. And there's so much more that, maybe they weren't aware of it, maybe that is, they only, you know, they only tunneled on what they were there for. But the more time you spend at town meeting, the better. The more that, it can be a kind of, I've had, I've invited many people to come to town meeting and just try to explain to them the process. And the more time I think you spend, the more you're going to understand when people do come up, they want to motion to amend an article. What does that look like? What does it look like when we have to do a standing count or, or, you know, a secret ballot? And people, you know, I also see this with elections, if you've never voted before, you think it's this, you know, this, you know, really intimidating process, but it's not. It just takes staying and learning the process.
Yeah.
So I plead with everybody. There's actually an article, I think it's Article Six, it has to do with vocational schools.
What's Article Six, Steve?
I could, please don't quote me. I know there's an article that's going to be for vocational schools, and I've seen the school votes a couple of times, and I know they can draw, and interest is required, you know?
Yeah.
Parents with schoolchildren. I hope that people will stay after that article is pulled.
Well, so we're actually, a little bit of self-promotion, we are actually going to run a workforce development forum on the 25th of September, where we will have Tom Hickey, the superintendent of the South Shore Votec, Aaron Obi, who is the super, schools, Pembroke Town Superintendent, and various other people, town managers going to be there to have this debate and have this, well, it's not actually a debate, but it's a conversation that everybody has to have with town. And what I want to do is, is inform the residents, because there's more to this than just having, yeah, I want voter, yeah, every, who wants Votec? Everyone's going to put their hands up. Who wants to pay for it?
How much does it cost?
Well, these are the questions we need to be asking. So, you know, I think we, we will have our workforce development forum just before, or before, probably a month before, actually, the, the special town meeting, just so that people are informed. When they vote there, they need to know what they're voting for.
So another story time. Right. Related to Andy's, I think, well-placed comment about people leaving, and I hate to see that as well. But, so I mentioned at the beginning of the program that our quorum was 150. And that's to start the meeting. It actually is 100 after the meeting gets going. So it doesn't come into play until, unless someone questions the quorum. So you could actually, once you, the meeting gets started, you could, and this is true, I think, for every legislative body, you could have three people there conducting town meeting, and unless someone questions the quorum, it can continue. So our quorum was 150, and there was a former selectman, I won't mention who he was, because I wasn't too pleased with him at the time, but he's a good guy, still involved in town government.
It's a he.
I gave half it away. But he was very strongly that, he was advocating for a zero quorum, which quite frankly, I don't think, we can talk about that at some other point, but I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea. And by the way, towns who have eliminated the quorum have had no problem getting a quorum. In fact, just the opposite is concern, is, is happened because people are afraid that six people will conduct all the business, so they all show up. But anyway, our quorum was 150. So there were several times when we had lengthy meetings, nine, along about 10, 10:30 or so, he would question the quorum, and we didn't have 150. The meeting had to end, and we had to go to a second town meeting. And there was at least one time when we could not get a quorum at the second town meeting. One time, we hadn't planned ahead, and we had to have it in the gym of the high school, and we couldn't get enough people.
And this is in your time, time as moderator?
This was early on, so it was probably early 2000s or so.
Right.
And so subsequently, we changed the quorum to reduce it to 150 to start, like it always was, but 100. So that's been fairly recent, and maybe when I say recent, it's been 10, 12 years or so. And so, and that select person has, the select board, former select board member has not questioned the quorum since then. But, so, so once we get going, if someone wants to question the quorum, we supposedly have to have at least 100 people there. Again, no one's questioning it since we reduced it, but it does make it a little easier to continue the meeting. Because that was difficult. There was some unfinished business of the meeting that we just never got to.
And there's a cost to running these town meetings.
Absolutely.
What's the cost?
So each night, to start, we have the, now we've got closed captioning rentals. We also have a stenographer that helps actually display those, the closed captioning. So that's $900, just them right alone. The cost, I had to employ check-in people, we get tellers, so those are all, those are all paid positions. So, I mean, at minimum, at least for my department, we're looking at about $1,500.
Stephen's 100, 100 bucks?
I'm hoping for a meeting.
That's per year.
Stephen just continued, but, no, so, I mean, at least for my department, it's, we're looking at at least 1,500.
Police?
Uh, we, I don't have to, I don't have to deploy detail. So it's not like an election where you need to have a constable or a police officer, the precinct.
There's always police detail there.
I'm not, I don't have to pay their bill, so, you know, I'm not sure if the, I'm not sure if the-
But there's a cost.
There is, absolutely.
There's the school, the infrastructure.
With the local scene, we have to have, you know, they have to have their setup.
Sure.
And then it can be disruptive to the school schedule as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we do our best to try, and the town manager act also helped us be able to trim the warrant, so it doesn't, we don't need to have as many articles brought forth at town meeting. So that helps, you know, the, the shorter your warrant, the more likely you're going to get the business.
Printing?
Yeah, all the, well, you'd have to, you'd, that, it's the same warrant, so you can try and get more copies, but usually we say, please, you know, please bring your copy back.
Someone, someone once mentioned to me, it's around about 10,000. When you, when you add up all of the hidden costs and the time and people's, it could be as high as 10 grand. The point is, you should, if you go to a second day.
Yeah. It can be costly. And it's also, I mean, like you said, like Steve said, it can be difficult to actually continue the business of the meeting. You can't get the quorum the second day. Since I've been in, it's been seven years, and we've, we have not gone to a second night. We were a little, we're always worried. We always plan for the second night, but we haven't had to. I think it'd be difficult. I think it'd be, it's difficult to get them on the, the scheduled planned night, so I think it'd be difficult. And then, who knows, then our operating budget might not have gone voted on, you know, so which, that won't happen because of the structure, but.
You've both given me some good ideas to be disruptive.
I will say, in the 15 years I've been moderator, other than those times when someone questioned the quorum, we didn't have a quorum, so we had to come back a second night to finish business, we have completed, and even those nights, we would have completed town meeting in one night.
Yeah.
And I think that's important for people to know, because first of all, we get going, we moved up the time, as I mentioned, it used to be 7:30, we moved it to seven o'clock. And now with the electronic check-in system that the clerk has. Oh, my gosh, it's quick. I mean, I always tell people, get there early, so there's time to register. But we won't start till most of the line is gone, but the clerks do a great job of processing people, getting them in, checking them off, and they get right in, sit down. And so we start close to seven, and, and we can get all the items done in one evening. And again, we had quite a few articles in the spring, and we were out of there in less than two hours, I think. Yeah, sometimes a little longer, yeah.
And we're, we're doing, we're doing things, so I actually put an article on this warrant. So one thing, every town meeting we meet, we have to actually vote to accept, to allow Steve to basically take a hand count. The two-thirds majority vote, Steve can declare majority based off a hand count. We have to vote to give him that power. So I've put forth an article for this town meeting so that, to put that in our bylaws permanently, so that every town meeting, we no longer have to vote to grant Steve that power. It's just granted in our bylaws. My, my hope with that is that we just expedite the process a little bit. I mean, I call that kind of the, the business of town meeting, and we have to get those, you know, those in place so that we're lawfully voting on these articles. And that's just one thing that we try to, to expedite, put that in the bylaws, so we don't have to vote, take time to vote. It only takes two minutes, but it's just something else. We also have another article to move some general housekeeping into the consent agenda. We did the consent agenda, I think, maybe three or four years now, and that's some non-controversial articles, like we took, except the annual reports, the, basically to set the election Saturday. I think there was, there's another, another operation budget in the consent agenda. So we're just moving some more things than that, and that's voted on at once.
Yeah.
And now the voters can always stop, and we can pull things out if they want to. But voting as, as a, you know, one package, it makes it easier, and it also, again, expels the process, and we kind of get to the more, I hate the word controversial, but, you know, the articles that are going to cause more discussion.
Yeah.
You know, the ones that are going to keep us there longer.
I, I remember being at one meeting when the hot ticket item came out of the bingo basket right at the very end, so everyone had to stay for that, which I thought was-
They all blame me for that.
That was terrific.
So just to explain it to people who may not know, not all towns do this, and I think probably fewer towns do it than do. But we use the lottery system.
Yep.
And, and I remember when that was instituted, well, well, you know, it's been decades. People felt that if they knew when their article was coming up, they could stack the meeting, they could come later, come early, and then leave. So now, with the exception of, and if this meeting article that Andy refers to, if this article passes, the consent calendar, which is all the non-controversial items grouped together, the budget, the wage and personnel scale, and it's just the consent, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Get, are taken out of order. So we get rid of all those at first.
Good.
And then everything else is your aforementioned lottery box. We use, literally use ping pong balls, I think.
Yeah.
And-
I think it's great.
And it's a lottery. We, we just, they come out at random, and I actually like it.
You should have a go at being a bingo caller, actually, during the night, you know?
Under the B.
Two fat ladies.
Free.
Very good. Look, we, we are, this is a sign of a great conversation. We're way over time here. However, I always give my guests the opportunity to say what they feel they haven't been able to say yet. So Andrea, is there something you was burning? You came to this podcast thinking, I've got to make sure I say this.
No, I just hope that people understand the importance of their attendance at town meeting. Again, I guess, you know, yield that power that you have as a registered voter, come it is the most direct representation of government I think you're going to find in this country. So I just, I strongly encourage people to attend the meeting, to stay for the entire meeting. If they have any questions prior to the meeting, they want to know some more information about the articles, they can call the town clerk's office. If I don't have the answer, I will connect you to the department or the group that will have the answer for you.
And I think, I know for sure, we, the bylaws committee are going to be doing a public hearing before the town meeting, so that we can explain what we've put on the warrant. Do other departments have to do that?
No. I've had to go before, I think I put, I put articles last year on the town meeting warrant. I submitted them for the department, and I had to go to the bylaw review committee, I think.
Right.
I think you guys, I think the bylaw review committee submitted them on our behalf, but no.
Yeah, but we did, we did, we also did a public hearing.
Yeah, no, we're not required to.
Planning board is.
The, yes, I'm sorry, planning board is. I think because the select board, we, we submit them to the select board. They don't have to take the, they don't have to take our articles if we don't, if they don't want to from the department heads. They can choose not to if they don't think it's in the best interest of the town.
Yeah.
So I think that's where the public hearing forum is, is during the select board meeting.
Got it.
Thankfully, they haven't returned any of mine, so.
Oh, we did the license, and we did the-
You did, yeah.
The voting hours, and, yeah. Stephen?
I love my job. I said this to someone the other day, it is the best, the best job in the world. And I, I thank the voters for re-electing me for 15 years, last 15 years. And I assure you, I will not stay as long as John Walsh did, 59 years. I think I figured it out, I have to be 104 to make that, and I have no desire to be moderator. But I was just elected to another three-year term. It used to be one year. That's the other amazing thing about John, 59 years, one-year term.
Wow.
Every year he had to run.
Yeah, every year. For me, the last couple, we changed a number of years ago, it's now three years.
2021, we changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm going to continue to do it as long as I can, as the folks elect me, but not forever. But it's my, I just get a great sense that I'm helping democracy and, and helping educate voters and helping get the town business done in a timely fashion. Without being political, we know many feel democracy is under attack. Town meeting is not under attack. And we have a great group of elected and appointed officials in Pembroke who make sure things run efficiently. I think that shows at town meeting, but ultimately, it's the voters' decision. And so again, as Andy's mentioned, I urge people to come out and vote for the, come out and attend and participate, but at least attend the special town meeting in October.
Yeah, terrific. So let's remind everyone of the dates before we go. First of October, the warrant is sealed, or it's gone to print.
It should be signed, it should be signed by our select board, yeah.
Signed by the select board. 10th of October is the last date for registering to vote. And then the 21st at seven o'clock PM is the, is the meeting.
And please, maybe arrive at like 6:30, so we can check everyone in in a timely manner, so we can hope, get the meeting started at 7:00.
And I believe, I think this is still being offered. We started this a number of years ago, but there is babysitting services offered by, through the high school.
Through the key club.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the details, but you can contact the administration, contact the school.
But that'll be babysitting at the school, so you bring your-